Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. This is the 14th day of August 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the Row Force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Futsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
All Board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, this is our first meeting of the 2023-2024 school year. And so we want to start off tonight by welcoming back all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our administrators, and recognizing that we have not only students who are coming back to school, back to their same school, but a lot of new students this year, so a lot of new teachers and a lot of new administrators as well. And so we want to welcome all of them here. We know we also have a lot of students who have changed schools, a lot of first-year freshmen in high school this year, and also a lot of people, especially our administrators, who've changed jobs. And so we're excited for all the new positions and all the new students and all the excitement that a new school year brings. I don't know if you have been traveling around Greeley. You might have noticed that there's been a lot of construction around District 6 facilities this year. And over the summer, we've been doing a lot of work. We will get a bond presentation and an update later in this meeting, but for those of you who can't stay for the entire meeting, I want to give you just a quick update right now. And that is just to say that tomorrow, we will cut the last ribbon that we're going to cut. In the 2019 bond issue, we planned to do five major projects. We were going to replace Greeley West and build a brand-new Greeley West. We're going to replace Madison Elementary and make a new Madison K-8. We were going to build a brand-new K-8 in Toynton. And we were going to do major additions to Chapelo and to Krista McAuliffe for those schools. And then what we did not plan to do, but because of good bond pricing, we were able to build a new CTE center. We're going to cut the ribbon on that CTE center tomorrow, and I would invite the community to come. We get this question all the time, why don't we do trades anymore? We absolutely, we don't call them trades anymore, but we absolutely do career and technical education and have just completed a fantastic facility for our students. But it will be the last of those major projects to get done. We still have a lot of projects going on in the district, some of them significant projects like the one that's going on at Heath. But it's absolutely amazing to me, and I certainly want to commend our administrative staff, because we started these projects, we did this bond issue in 2019, in less than four years, all six of those major projects will be completed. We did that, if everyone remembers, several months after we started. We had a global pandemic, which slowed down a lot of, as we all heard, supply chains and things like steel was glass were not as easily available. And so it is astounding that we have been able to complete that on time, each one of those major projects. Not once have our students been kept out of or pushed their start-back date. That often happens when you build school buildings, you end up starting school in September. That hasn't happened, thankfully, not yet on any of these. And so just want to give an incredible congratulations to this administrative staff for pulling that off. And there are a lot of people involved in that. But thank you for, we promised a lot, and you guys, as a board member, you can make promises and you can make decisions, but you can't actually make things happen that comes down to our administration. And they've just been fantastic in pulling that off. One last thing, I saw today, and I get this question every so often, about teacher shortages. There was an article today that was in national media about teacher shortage. There is a national teacher shortage. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of that, but that is not only a District 6 problem, a state, Colorado problem, and it is a nationwide problem. And that has several reasons for that. Several of those have to do with the pandemic, that we saw people retire sooner than they expected to retire. We also saw people delay college, and we don't have as many people coming out of college with teaching credentials as we did. And so there is a national shortage. And so people ask, how are we doing with that? And I want to say that we, so far in this district, we certainly can see it. We knew that it was coming, we could see it coming, we're certainly starting to feel that and see that showing up in different places. However, we do quite well with that. And it's for this reason, and so I just want to thank our public for this. We passed a mill levy override again, and so we've been able to keep up.
Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. This is the 14th day of August 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas? Director Sullivan?
Present.
All Board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, this is our first meeting of the 2023-2024 school year. And so we want to start off tonight by welcoming back all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our administrators, and recognizing that we have not only students who are coming back to school, back to their same school, but a lot of new students this year. So a lot of new teachers and a lot of new administrators as well. And so we want to welcome all of them here. We know we also have a lot of students who have changed schools, a lot of first-year freshmen in high school this year, and also a lot of people, especially our administrators, who've changed jobs. And so we're excited for all the new positions and all the new students and all the excitement that a new school year brings. I don't know if you have been traveling around Greeley. You might have noticed that there's been a lot of construction around District 6 facilities this year. And over the summer, we've been doing a lot of work. We will get a bond presentation and an update later in this meeting. But for those of you who can't stay for the entire meeting, I want to give you just a quick update right now. And that is just to say that tomorrow, we will cut the last ribbon that we're going to cut. In the 2019 bond issue, we planned to do five major projects. We were going to replace Greeley West and build a brand-new Greeley West. We're going to replace Madison Elementary and make a new Madison K-8. We were going to build a brand-new K-8 in Toynton. And we were going to do major additions to Chapelo and to Krista McAuliffe for those schools. And then what we did not plan to do, but because of good bond pricing, we were able to build a new CTE center. We're going to cut the ribbon on that CTE center tomorrow, and I would invite the community to come. We get this question all the time, why don't we do trades anymore? We absolutely, we don't call them trades anymore, but we absolutely do career and technical education and have just completed a fantastic facility for our students. But it will be the last of those major projects to get done. We still have a lot of projects going on in the district, some of them significant projects, like the one that's going on at Heath. But it's absolutely amazing to me, and I certainly want to commend our administrative staff because we started these projects, we did this bond issue in 2019. In less than four years, all six of those major projects will be completed. We did that, if everyone remembers, several months after we started. We had a global pandemic, which slowed down a lot of, as we all heard, supply chains and things like steel was, glass were not as easily available. And so it is astounding that we have been able to complete that on time, each one of those major projects. Not once have our students been kept out of or pushed their start-back date. That often happens when you build school buildings, you end up starting school in September. That hasn't happened, thankfully, not yet on any of these. And so just want to give an incredible congratulations to this administrative staff for pulling that off. And there are a lot of people involved in that. But thank you for, we promised a lot, and you guys, as a board member, you can make promises and you can make decisions, but you can't actually make things happen that comes down to our administration. And they've just been fantastic in pulling that off. One last thing, I saw today, and I get this question every so often about teacher shortages. There was an article today that was in national media about teacher shortage. There is a national teacher shortage. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of that. But there are, that is not only a District 6 problem, a state Colorado problem, and it is a nationwide problem. And that is, there are several reasons for that. Several of those have to do with the pandemic, that we saw people retire sooner than they expected to retire. We also saw people delay college, and we don't have as many people coming out of college with teaching credentials as we did. And so there is a national shortage. And so people ask, how are we doing with that? And I want to say that we, so far in this district, we certainly can see it. We knew that it was coming, we could see it coming. We're certainly starting to feel that and see that showing up in different places. However, that, we do quite well with that. And it's for this reason, and so I just want to thank our public for this. We passed a millevy override again. And so we've been able to keep up with the other school districts that are raising, raising their starting salaries for teachers. And so we are a competitive school district in northern Colorado. And that is because, I mean, it's due to a lot of people working hard and I see a lot of our HR staff here. And I know it's a lot of work to hire enough teachers. But it is absolutely true that it is because of our voters and the passage of that MLO and being able to offer competitive salaries. And so again, want to thank our voters for enabling us to do the right thing for our teachers and ultimately do the right thing for our kids. And so that is all I have for tonight. But we need to approve an agenda to move forward, and we'll need a motion to do so.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you all. So any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas? Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are our board member comments and reports. And so we'll start tonight with Dr. Campos Spitsi.
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, while today is the first day of school for many of our students, after a long, well-deserved summer off, in my role as a board member, we continue to try to be engaged with the community and with our schools even through the summer. So I wanted to let you guys know of a few ways that I've been involved this summer. But mostly, I wanted to highlight that through the activities that I've been involved in, I wanted to convey to you the level of commitment and love that the rest of our community has for our kids. So starting in June, on the official first day of summer, the Pooter Learning Center Foundation had their fundraising breakfast on summer solstice. And they are fundraising for a beautiful outdoor amphitheater to continue to teach our students about environmental stewardship. So that was a really great event. Later in the month, the Midnight Oil Bookstore downtown hosted a reading for the kids in our community. The author and illustrator of this book is Armando Silva. He's arguably our city's favorite muralist. You'll see his beautiful artwork all over downtown and all over our schools. But yeah, he wrote and illustrated this book called What Happened to My Paletas? What Happened to My Popsicles? And I got to bring my kids to that reading where the kids got free popsicles, and it was just a great event. The Chamber of Commerce in July hosted a meet-and-greet for our new State Commissioner of Education, Susana Cordova. She's the first Latina to hold this position in the state of Colorado, and it is considered the highest position in education. So I was really proud to get to know her at that event, and much of our community came out, which was really cool. We had the DLT kickoff, the District Leadership Team kickoff, later on in July, where the building leaders, the principals, the assistant principals, the instructional coaches came together, and we had a type of pep rally led by our head coach over here, Dr. Deirdre Pilch, to just encourage the staff for the upcoming year. I got to go to Dancing with the Weld County Stars for the very first time, and I'll say it's been the funnest fundraiser I've ever attended. There was a really fun rivalry between Gia Storga and Matt Estrin of 477 Distilling that made the event a blast. The fundraiser is for the Boys and Girls Club, and I am really curious how much they fundraised that night because John Hayfully alone fundraised over $30,000 for the Boys and Girls Club just that night. So obviously, the kids that go to the Boys and Girls Club are the same kids that we're taking care of in our schools and often the kids with the highest needs. So I was really proud to be part of that event. Got to go to Habitat for Humanity in July, their fundraising breakfast. The Big Balloon Bill did a fundraiser for Life Stories, which is an organization in town that advocates for children in our county who have been victims of abuse and neglect. And then got to meet up with a bunch of our D6 high schoolers. They invited me because I'm a family doctor. They have a group called SHAC, which is an acronym for Student Health Advisory Council. And it's a group of high schoolers who are interested and focused on improving the health of their fellow students and specifically the mental health of their fellow students to prevent things like suicide. I thought it was really cool. The SHAC students came to our big district kickoff where we gave away nearly 4,000 backpacks, and they had a smoothie bike. And the way they use the smoothie bike, so they're promoting health because they're, you know, you're riding a bike in order to make a smoothie, and those things are healthy. But in order to ride the bike, you have to say something you're grateful for. So I just really love that because they're, you know, taking care of the whole person. In August, I got to attend the end-of-summer intern celebration. As you may know, if you follow some of our media, over the summer, we had 48 community partners that allowed for 142 of our students to have paid summer internships in all kinds of places around town, from lawyers' offices to construction, to the libraries, to Sunrise Community Health. And so that was really, really cool for our students and to celebrate that. In August, we also got to host a Friday Fest along with the Success Foundation. It was a fundraiser to stock the pantries in our district. We have nine food pantries, and we want to open 12 more. And so the community came out, lots of downtown community sponsors who gave their profits from that night or part of their profits to the Success Foundation and the food pantries. And then I hope that somebody else gets to talk about the school kickoff because that was a really great event. I'd never been to it. I'll just talk a little bit about it. But as I approached the Island Grove Regional Center, I saw about five paleteros. Paleteros are, you know, the guys that push the popsicle carts around, and it was just a festive environment. Tigre Radio was there playing music, and there was a petting zoo, and it was just a blast. And we ended this month, or up until now, we got to honor Danielle Bach, the Director of D6 Nutrition Services at the BizWest Women of Distinction Award Ceremony. So we were really proud to cheer her on. My friend Betsy Valdez also got an award, so I got to cheer on two really cool women. And then we ended it, four days ago, we got to do a ribbon-cutting at James Madison Steam Academy, our newest and shiniest pre-K through 8 school in the district in a really high-needs neighborhood. And so really proud that that decision was made by the board to replace that school. And so I also made time for family. We got to go camping a couple times. Salida Colorado is one of our happy places, and we got to go there at least twice. Got to go to Oregon for the Fourth of July. And yesterday went partially deaf at Island Grove at the Monster Truck Extravaganza, which my four-year-old daughter really enjoyed. So happy to be here, happy to be kicking off the school year. So proud to be part of a community that loves our kids. Like the community partnerships that we have in District 6, it's just amazing. I think at the backpack kickoff where we gave 4,000 backpacks away, we had 54 community sponsors. And that just, like, I feel the love through the summer, even when the kids are out of school. There are adults in this community who care and who put action to their words, and I'm so proud to live here and be part of this.
Mr. Bentley?
Well, I don't know how you follow that, but I definitely didn't come that prepared. I also didn't do that much stuff, attend as many things as Brenda did. I did get the Habitat for Humanity Breakfast. It's always fun and just hear about their big project they have, Hope Springs coming up. That one's a pretty amazing project. I think it's one of their biggest in the West or the state or something. Just hear those stories and the lives they touch, that one's pretty amazing. I did get to go to the BizWest Women of Distinction thing for Danielle Bach, and that was amazing to see her win the educator category. So she did a great job, and, you know, she's a great champion for our district. And it's good to see her hard work and all the great things she's doing continually recognized and appreciated. So other than that, I just worked and focused on the kids, and we tried to have as much fun as we could cram into 10 weeks with our short schedule, with our charter school starts a little earlier than District 6 does. But other than that, I'm just excited to get back to work and see all your guys' smiling faces.
Ms. Mash?
Well, I do think that Brenda covered everything. I'm like, check, check, yep, yep, yep. So, but it was a really fun summer. And, you know, similar, I wanted to call out, you know, my two favorite roles being on the board is visiting the schools. And it was really fun to get to do Madison's ribbon-cutting on the same night as their back-to-school night. So we were getting to see all these kiddos' reactions to the building for the first time. And it is just beautiful, gonna be, gonna be a really great year for them. And thank you to Kathy Nelson for being our interim principal there. And, you know, not only does she agree to come back and help, but she's doing a really big thing, opening a brand-new building. So I'm sure her expertise are going to be well utilized there. But my second favorite thing is to get to go to all of the community events. And like Brenda said, just learn about the other people that are serving our community well and loving our kids along with us. So if I would highlight, I guess maybe the highest, or the most exciting things for me was meeting the Commissioner of Education. And once again, it's really honoring when someone with a lot of authority comes to visit Greeley-Evan School District 6 because we're doing great things and we're a leader in the state. And we pursue relationships so that we can, you know, utilize their expertise and help later on if we need to. The intern celebration was especially personal for me because my daughter got to do one of those internships. And it was held at the Link Library. I would say if you haven't been there yet, man, it's been open for two months. Get down there. It is so amazing, so beautiful, just again, what a gift to our community. And the BizWest Celebration Women of Distinction was fun to see all the other alums who have won that award in the past, like Dr. Pilch. But Danielle Bach continues to feed our children well and innovate new ways to make the food taste good and be really nutritious. So I got to travel a little bit with my family, go to a graduation in Seattle. We spent an overnight in Grover, Colorado. A friend has a little vintage trailer there that we got to stay in and just have a peaceful, quiet sunset on Pawnee Buttes. So yeah, looking forward to, we're hitting the ground running for a school visit at Scott Elementary in a week, I think. So looking forward to seeing all the smiling faces and just what this year will bring.
Thank you, Ms. Mash.
Mr. Norwood? I didn't get a chance to do much this summer except work, but I did get a chance to catch up with a couple of former students that I had at Northridge High School that are current new teachers to the district. So had an opportunity to visit with them, and another one went to another district. So it's fun to see that we are getting some students to come into teaching, but we need more. Always need more teachers, always need more substitutes. We need more bus drivers. So if you're out there, please sign up and help the district. We could sure use your help. Other than that, I did get a chance to sneak out a couple times and go see my beloved Yankees, even though they're in last place. So, but still a long season to go.
Ms. Sullivan?
In our household, we pretty much kept our nose to the grindstone, did a lot of work, extra work, did just mostly yard work around the house and whatnot. Working on our oldest, though, he's looking at colleges and whatnot. And sat down with him, and we're starting the grindstone on looking at scholarships and moving forward and learning on what it takes and whatnot, which was actually something I enjoyed doing back when my older kids, who are now already graduated out of school and whatnot, back in high school, we would sit down around the house and go through scholarships and learn about adulting and what it takes. So it's an exciting time for him to kind of have the reality check as to what's going forward and whatnot. I think I'm really excited, though, about the opening for the new school for tomorrow night with the ribbon-cutting for Jefferson. So hopefully, a lot of people come out because I think the opportunity of what they're offering there is pretty unique. So that's about all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Pappas?
Yes, it is great to be back and looking forward to all of you.
It is great to be back and looking forward to all of the events that are upcoming in the next few weeks. It was a busy summer, and I did appreciate attending many of the events that have already been spoken about. But I would say that one thing that hasn't been mentioned is that we are starting the Community Council on Education, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. And we've had a couple meetings this summer, and I really appreciate and value the input from our business leaders and their commitment to getting out into our community and sharing the positive message of how great School District 6 is. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate all of you being here tonight, especially those people that are, have worked all day and you're here tonight to support our district by attending a board meeting. And then finally, welcome to Reagan, who is our new Council of Student Rep President, and then welcome back to Richard. So we really appreciate having you at the table. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas.
I don't have a lot to add. It was great to go to the BizWest Women of Distinction Award for Danielle Bach. She has done, as I think most everybody knows, if you follow this school district at all, you know she's done such a fantastic job and is recognized often, not only in this community, but statewide and also nationally for the work that she does for feeding kids. And it was great to see her recognized again and that people pay attention to what we're doing. Madison is spectacular. Encourage everybody, if you can, get by there, and not all at once, but if you can, get by there to see it. It is a fantastic new facility. But certainly want to say thank you to Teresa Myers and the communications team for the backpack giveaway. And that is, this is the 10th year that we've done this. We gave away almost 4,000 backpacks that morning. And just think about that for a second. That is almost 20% of the kids that attend this district lined up. And some of them lined up, it started at nine, or people lined up at seven to make sure that they got a backpack. And again, we do thank our community partners. What I do in that event is generally just walk around and thank those community partners for being there. And every one of them, not every one of them, but again, and again, and again, they are so thankful to be there, they're so thankful for the district and the ability to participate with the district. And I hear this from so many who are there, oftentimes part of our staff, sometimes community members. It's just one of the best things that we do as a school district, and it's such a great way to kick off the school year. And so again, thank you to Ms. Myers and to her staff who put that together every year. And that's all I've got. So Ms. Lemon, can you give us a work session report, please?
The work session began with a review of upcoming events and community engagement opportunities. The board discussed committee assignments, school liaison assignments, and upcoming school visits. Dr. Pilch gave updates on schools' opening and staffing, the school-community kickoff event, the upcoming all-staff convocation, universal preschool, and the superintendent evaluation deadline. The work session concluded with a debrief from the Council of Student Representatives and each board member.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, next on our agenda is Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And that's a mouthful, and we've had a, gotten to talk about a few members of your cabinet, Dr. Pilch, but I imagine you're going to get to talk about a few more. And so I'm going to hand this over to you to introduce this award.
Thank you so much, President Matthews. I'm really excited to recognize our finance department and in particular, our Chief Financial Officer, Megan Sponsor, and our Director of Finance, Mandy Hydock, and their teams. And this is a huge honor for us, and we're super proud of it. It's an award that is given to government finance officers by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. They've awarded us with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and for our annual comprehensive financial report for this past fiscal school year. The report is judged by an impartial panel of judges, and they have criteria by which they are judging our work here in the district by what we report and what they're able to see in terms of our publications. And they indicated that we have demonstrated a constructive spirit of full disclosure and that we clearly communicate our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to actually read that report and then also to learn from us. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management, and a significant accomplishment by our finance department. So congratulations to them. It's truly an honor. And I know, you know, we often hear, well, the funding, the budget, there's not enough transparency. But here's an outside agency that's completely impartial, taking a look at governmental entities and saying, hey, we are... and saying, hey, we are, we meet, meet the highest ranking of that. Um, I'll just add briefly to that, that I'm a part of the Colorado School Finance Project and, uh, they have looked to, to our reporting around the spending, the plan for and the spending of the ESER one, two, and three dollars and, and have used us as an example on that plan and then, and the spending and then the reporting on our spending. And so we have a lot to be proud of here when it comes to our finance department. So kudos to both Ms. Sponsor, Ms. Hydock, and to their teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And, oh, Dr. Campus Spitsy.
For Megan and Heidi, I wanted to say that I was really pleased to see, um, you guys get this recognition, but not at all surprised. And just want to point out to those of you who weren't here for our last meeting, but re-reviewed our proposed budget for 2023 to 2024. And Megan and her team were able to give us this budget while Megan was going through a really hard time in her life. And so just in total admiration of your team and, and your hard work and you take your work very seriously and personal pride in your work. And it's very evident to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campus Spitsy. Ms. Mash.
And I just wanted to, um, verify this, this, we've won this award a number of times before. Is that correct, Dr. Pilch?
Yes, correct.
So it is a consistent performance and so well done.
Yeah, we're extremely proud of, uh, our financial team and, and the great work that you do. Uh, next on our agenda is our superintendent's honor roll. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. You all may remember that we added this in the spring last year that, um, I am taking the privilege to name groups or individuals or, uh, programs as a part of a superintendent's honor roll. And I want to start first with our finance department, who we just recognized and just say one more thing about, um, them on the superintendent's honor roll. And that is this. We have, we have been accountable to millions of dollars, million, I mean, half a billion, over half a billion dollars of bond dollars here in District Six. Um, every year, millions of dollars for our mill levy override and then millions of dollars for, for COVID relief funds. And, and yet we still are recognized for our excellence, um, and the work that our finance department does. So congratulations and welcome to the superintendent's honor roll. And next, of course, we have to have, you all have talked about Ms. Danielle Bach, uh, one of our, our Women of Distinction. She's right here on the front page of Biz West. Um, but she absolutely deserves the superintendent's honor roll for being selected in the category of education by Biz West. And there, this award, all these awardees, um, there were dozens of, of women nominated in these categories. So it's really truly an honor. So, um, welcome to the superintendent's honor roll, Danielle Bach, Director of Nutrition Services. And then finally, I want to welcome to the superintendent's honor roll, all the hundreds of participants who outpull off the school kickoff event. And I'd be remiss if I did not specifically call out, uh, Ms. Teresa Myers, our Chief of Communications and her communications team, and then all the folks who gather around them to make that event such a huge success. It's the biggest event we've had in District Six, um, probably the biggest of any kind of event, not just the backpack event. Uh, we served nearly double the number of students with physicals to get them ready for sports here in District Six. And as you indicated, President Matthews, thousands of backpacks. Um, and we could not do this event without the community sponsors who have stepped up and helped us provide all the, all the materials and the equipment, um, the backpacks and, and the items in the backpacks as well as the giveaways that day. And thank you to the board members who were able to participate. It, it truly, it truly is a remarkable day and, um, it is, it's wonderful to kick school off in that manner. So as we welcome them to the superintendent's honor roll, we also have a video for you that, um, memorializes the school kickoff. We know it works. We've all viewed it. Should we just go to YouTube and pull it up? Maybe? It's worth the wait. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. And is there more that you, you have, Dr. Pilch?
I would like, yes, thank you, President Matthews. I'd like to take, um, this time and I want to introduce the young people sitting next to me. I have Reagan Madalis sitting next to me and Richard Alania. Both, um, are part of the Council of Student Reps here in District Six and we're excited to have you here at the, at the board table with us. And Richard joined us for the work session and we'll get Reagan there in the future. So welcome, guys. Glad to have you. Uh, then I want to introduce to you, do you want to say something about that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to introduce to you, uh, the individuals who are on the agenda tonight, uh, as in new administrative positions. And quite frankly, they've been back at work already and hit the ground running in order for us to get school open. Um, as you, you've given me authority to hire them in the absence of a summer board meeting. But I want to start first with Kathy Nelson, who one of you mentioned, uh, as coming back to James Madison Pre-K Eight Steam Academy. And Kathy is well known in our, our community and in our school district. And she was formerly the principal at Meeker Elementary School, went through the flood and the rebuild of Meeker Elementary School with us and, and also moved student achievement for us at Meeker Elementary School. And Kathy retired and then we brought her back a couple of times, uh, to fill in for us and to help us out. But this truly was the biggest ask, um, that we've asked Kathy to do after retirement. And that is to come and, and take James Madison, a brand new building, uh, where, where the principal had left pretty suddenly and to take that school and, and to get it ready for opening and then to open that school and to prepare them for a new future principal. So welcome back, Kathy. We're glad to hire you yet again. And then I want to just briefly introduce to you Jim Donahue, um, who we, we are, um, looking at tonight on the agenda for the Director of Title IX and Compliance. Jim's not able to be with us tonight. He had a previous commitment from, before we ever hired him. But Jim came to us out of Greeley Central High School where he served on the security team there. Um, but I'm, I'm really pleased to have him here in the district. He has extensive police background and experience. He's, he has served as a lieutenant, a detective, as a SWAT team lead, um, a stint as an interim chief of police, both in Wyoming and Colorado. Uh, he, he comes to us most recently, again, from Greeley Central High School and just prior to that, working in dropout prevention in Wyoming. But we're really glad to have him here. And, um, he brings a Bachelor's of Arts in Political Science and Public Administration from Colorado State University. So we'll, we'll get you all a chance to meet him. We'll get him at a future board meeting. Um, and then I want to introduce to you our new principal at Prairie Heights Middle School, Jessica Cooney. And most of you know Jessica. I want to, I want to tell you just a little bit about her. Uh, so Jessica began her teaching career here in District Six in 2008 and quickly transitioned to a role in the newcomer program and teaching in the culturally linguistically diverse and, and became an instructional lead and then served here at the district office for five years as our CLD coordinator, uh, for the district, primarily working with secondary schools. And then this past year, Jessica decided she wanted to get into a building because she would like to be a building principal one day. And so she went to Greeley Central High School as, as one of the assistant principals over there and really, really took, uh, programs by the reins there and stepped up as a leader in a big way. Uh, and we have just recently, uh, appointed her at Prairie Heights Middle School as the principal. And she has hit the ground running there. I was out there last week with her and her staff and, um, she's doing a great job, having just opened the school for, for the school year. She obtained her Bachelor's of Arts degree in kinesiology and physical education at the University of Northern Colorado. And then, uh, her Master's of Arts in culturally and linguistically diverse education from University of Northern Colorado and her principal license through Western Governors University. And any of you who know Jessica, you know that she is also an Ironman athlete. So, Ironwoman, Jessica, welcome to Prairie Heights Middle School. And then I want to introduce to you, uh, Rachel Weber, our new assistant principal at Northridge High School. And I'm pleased, pleased to recommend her to you all. Uh, she comes to us out of Franklin Middle School. So this is her, her first foray into high school, um, work. She too has a background in culturally and linguistically diverse, uh, development. And before teaching though, this is what I think gets her ready to be at the high school level. She worked as, as a banker, a ski instructor and a substitute teacher. So anybody who does that is preparing for what a high school will bring you. Um, she, uh, obtained her Bachelor's of Science in, uh, teaching second language and elementary ed from the University of Wisconsin and earned a Master's of Arts in Ed Leadership from the University of Northern Colorado. And, uh, like the other administrators I've introduced tonight, she too has hit the ground running there with her new principal, Erin Allen at, at Northridge High School. Welcome, Rachel. We're so glad to have you in the role. Then I think our latest hire, um, in administration is Jeremy Hayden, who we have recently hired as the engagement specialist at Franklin Middle School and Heath Middle School. So he'll share time between those schools, um, and, and really work on engagement and climate and culture there with those young people. Um, I, I want to tell you just a little bit about Mr. Hayden. He has been the head football coach at Northridge High School for the past four years. And if y'all were paying attention to Northridge football five years ago, and then you paid attention last year, it's a completely different program. And really one, one head coach can make a difference like that. And, and he has done that. Um, he's been teaching at Goal Academy. We've been trying to get him over here to, to District Six and finally found the right fit for him. He has a Bachelor's of Science in Math and a Master's of Arts in Sports Coaching from the University of Northern Colorado. And he has proven to be deeply dedicated to our students here in District Six. And, um, I don't know if you saw the boys on the video or not, but, uh, anywhere that District Six is having a big event, uh, Coach Hayden will have his football, his Northridge Grizzlies there, uh, with a big show and, and, and a big hand of support. And, and I'm just really proud to bring him into, um, an administrative role here in District Six. Welcome, Jeremy. So that, with those, those hires, um, that makes us still down about 80 or so staff here in District Six, which is actually really good. You mentioned a teacher shortage. It's a real thing, President Matthews. Uh, there's not, not a one of us, um, superintendents in the state who is not facing some sort of staff shortage. So of those positions, some of them are, uh, support positions and some of them are actual licensed teachers. Uh, but we're feeling pretty good about our staffing right now and, and really hopeful about continuing to fill positions. We're, we have some folks still waiting, um, to be finalized in their hiring, but, but we'll keep working at that and, and we look forward to getting people fully, fully hired into the system. Um, I also wanted to just share a little bit about enrollment. Our enrollment is up just a bit. It looks a little higher than that right now. Um, about 550 more kids than last year right now. Uh, it's, it's a little hard to judge because we can't count preschool any longer. We used to count preschool in the past. And so we know, I heard earlier, we're going to have about 540 preschool seats. Um, so we're going to be, you know, a few hundred students over where we were last year, which is really, a really good thing. You all have heard me say that there are districts closing schools and we are a district that is opening schools and building additions onto our schools to take care of the children we have. And, um, by all recommendations coming to us from, um, the folks we work with on demography in the community, we will continue to grow. So, uh, thank you again for your support of the bond issue and the mill levy override so we can take care of the children we have here in District Six. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda tonight is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community-
President Matthews, I forgot one person. May I interrupt? Another hire.
Uh, absolutely.
And that's pretty bad because I was staring right at him. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you. Um, so, uh, we also have an assistant principal, Jim Butterfield at Greeley Central High School. Um, and, you know, I, I will admit, I worked with Jim years ago, over a decade ago, we worked together. So it's kind of natural just to see him sitting here like he'd never really gone away. Um, but Mr. Butterfield has over 30 years' experience in education from teaching to assistant principal to athletic director and most recently, um, nearly a decade as a middle school principal in Mesa County. Uh, we're really excited to have him here in District Six. He has served in the Boulder Valley School District and the St. Brain School District and the Cherry Creek School District. Um, his bachelor's is in construction management from Colorado State University. He has a Master's in Special Education, um, from the University of Northern Colorado and his ed leadership and superintendent licenses were earned from the University of Colorado Denver. And, um, Jim came in pretty late here in the game and, uh, jumped in at Greeley Central High School. Just as Jessica, um, was moving on, we, we knew we needed to fill a position there. So we're really glad to have him. Um, sorry about forgetting you, Jim, and thank you, Mr. Osmus. So welcome to Jim Butterfield.
Now we'll move on in our agenda to public participation. And as a board, we welcome the comments of community members and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically do not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, and not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. And we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech and speakers remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of public comment. And with that read, we'll have our first speaker tonight and we have Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. Thank you for being here tonight and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you and welcome back, everybody. In an interview on August 9th, Governor Jared Polis stated that the real problem with the kickoff of Universal Preschool isn't that there isn't the funding to support it, but that parents just want free childcare. I hope Greeley Evans District Six takes a strong stance against Governor Polis and acknowledge that all children are deserving of quality preschool education. are deserving of quality preschool education. If we had 4,000 backpacks to give away, is it really ideal to discredit the impact of our declining economy on all of our families? I hope District Six is doing their part in pointing out neither Governor Polis nor the Department of Early Childhood accounted for children who turned five after October 1st, in addition to overstating to parents how many hours of preschool their children qualified for. I know the district has historically gone along with what Jared Polis has said. And I just hope that they can, for the record, state that any issues with the kickoff of universal preschool does not fall on our parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Dr. Bruce Baderius. Welcome, Dr. Baderius. Thank you for being here tonight, and you will have two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you and our community. As you know, I've been following the request to ban specific books. Some of these same persons now say they're not about banning books in our district. Go figure. There may be an answer to such an apparent contradiction. You suppose there were comedians speaking to the board. During the recent several weeks, the Greeley County Chapter of Bombs for Liberty was launched. Such a development begs the question as to the purpose of such an organization. And seeking to answer the question, it was discovered that this organization has been labeled as anti-government extremist organization by the Southern Poverty Law Center. After reading the analysis by Wikipedia as to its origins, one may better understand why it has earned this label. Also shared with you are articles from the Colorado Public Radio and NBC News regarding the takeover of the Woodland Park School Board in Colorado. This continues to be news worthy. When compared to Douglas County's school takeover, you find at least one action in common. That of the immediate dismissal of the superintendent and confrontation with the teachers' organization. Do any of the candidates now support such an outcome? Are these wolves dressed in sheep among the candidates? By addressing you and hopefully our community, we need more than ever to do our due diligence as to the character, vision, and goals of each candidate, especially for students and teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Baderius. Thank you for being here tonight. Next tonight, we have Mr. Stephen Grant. Welcome, Mr. Grant. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, board. Welcome back. Our children are now returning to school. And as they are returning to school, as well as you, let me remind you, my name is Stephen Grant, pastor of church here in town. Been coming to these board meetings now for between seven and eight years. Been to every one. Been mostly to work sessions because I want to listen and understand what is going on. And because I have, I've understood some things. First of all, you have banned books. I have the book you banned. It's called "The Bible in History and Literature", and you banned it in 2016 in a work session illegally without any dialogue or invitation to speak. Mr. Matthews, you were a part of that. Now, as that happened, you took a stand and you took a principled stand on that curriculum, even though it was supported. Now our children are returning to school, and they are now facing some of the spudgy and obscene books that I could not read to children, but they are in our schools. And you did this. There were two of our directors, Director Norwood and Director Sullivan, that stood against some of these books. But the others have been overtly approved by Superintendent Pilch, as well as the other five members of the school board. So with that in mind tonight, I wish to congratulate you. Not only are your literacy scores failing in this district, not only are your math scores failing in this district, but now you are going to receive another award because the Gospel of Luke, Chapter 17 and Verse 2, says that those who offend the little ones and those who do not take a stand and protect them, it would be better for them to have a millstone tied around their neck and they cast into the midst of the sea. So I present to you tonight, the five of you and Dr. Pilch, the National Millstone Award, ENEMI for short. You are deserving of this and you are recipients of it. I will present it to Amy Lemons. And you are truly worthy of this award because you have made our children more vulnerable by re-entering school than they have been in the last two months staying out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Foster, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. Obviously, challenges to books in the school system is going to be another hot-button issue this year. I just want to say, I again want to reiterate my support for the board's current policy, for the district's current policy that allows any parent or guardian to opt their student out of materials, or in fact, an entire library if they choose to do so, rather than enforcing restrictions on all students when a very small minority has objections. And their objections are valid, but they have recourse. And their recourse is they can remove those materials from their students without impinging on the rights of every other student in the district. So again, I just want to say I support that policy. I myself am reading through the books because I've noticed a number of the people that have objected to the books have not actually read them. And I don't know how you can form an opinion if you haven't actually read the material. And I can't say that I've enjoyed everyone that I've read. But I feel like I cannot speak intelligently on them if I have not read them. So I would encourage other people. It's like form your opinions through firsthand knowledge. Please do not rely on somebody's clickbait that they might put on social media or something else. The terms that are tossed out there, read them for yourself, review the district's current policies, and then form an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Teetz.
Good evening. It's been a while. My name is Steve Teetz. I'm in Greeley. And I've talked to this before, and it's very important. And it has to do with the health and safety of the students riding the Greeley Evans Transit. They still stack me like sardines. They sometimes stand against the door or close thereof, the back door. And the bus hits something or the bus gets hit, the students go out the door, and then who's going to be sued? And also, a few years back, that the Greeley Evans Transit bus and a semi crashed on 35th Avenue and Highway 34. So we didn't learn from that. And I like to see something done and for safety and also for health. I don't know what else to do with it. I've gone to the city council. I've gone to here a few times, and I've been ignored. Even gone to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board, and I've been ignored there. Where do I go? Do I go to state? The other one is, where's our morals? Our previous speaker talked about books. The parents trust you for age-appropriate books. When I was young, that's only a few years ago, that the parents, we didn't have to worry about that. I mean, if anything happened, that the principal or the superintendent would make sure that it was age-appropriate or it was out of the school. So I'd just like to say is that we need to fix things. Because in the students and the, I'll think of it, the bus system and as well as the books. And I know throughout the United States is having this problem too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
How'd you like your awards? Hello, public servants. How did you sleep now that you're up to your eyes in this heap? You haven't stopped yet, but you may have learned. Well, citizens are watching and we're pretty concerned. Masks, isolation, advice from the WHO, cohorts and distance and quarantines too, the shots and the testing, what did it all do? It screwed up our kids and it screwed you up too. You sold off your soul. It belongs not to you. Now Satan's in charge and the normal is new. He's branded our logo, moved into our schools, and up on the dais sit some of his tools. Kill, steal, and destroy is the ultimate goal, whatever it takes to gain total control. 78 million is what D6 made from COVID relief funds for rules they obeyed. But they didn't stop there. These insatiable whores, among the inflation, they took on the chore of extending our taxes and begging for more. Rushed to the ballot and very well-funded Measure 4A was passed, taxpayers plundered. An additional tax on business and homes for 17 years, thanks to these drones. COVID relief funds and property taxes, bond money, grant money, whatever the max is, they take it all in like gluttonous pigs and give us two minutes to get in our digs. Just look what they've done. How much is enough? These tyrannical twats should already be cuffed. Speaking of having these perverts arrested, let's talk about porn and the books we've contested. No summer book club for School District Six, but I'm sure you've returned with a new bag of tricks. In almost nine months, only four books reviewed. Our kids still exposed to these stories so lewd. We know how you roll. You'll keep all the books because the committee is run by groomers and crooks. You didn't stand up when you knew it was wrong. And what's worse than that, you're still going along. Girls can't be boys and boys can't be girls and men don't look good in lipstick and curls. How did we go from crayons and pencils to Storytime Hour with men dressed in tinsel? Parents beware of these government schools. They'll destroy little children and the family jewels.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Foster. Welcome, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity and welcome back. I continue to volunteer at Chardas School, and I saw that it's coming up later on the agenda. The changes that were made there are absolutely awesome. We have room to do all kinds of special things with kids. It was a bit of a crunch. We were in there for a couple of days in hard hats. I was a little late tonight because I was so tired from unpacking all last week and Saturday. But I'd like to share a couple of stories. Also, Madison is awesome. And I look forward to the next Mill levy override to bring other schools up to the quality of Madison and of Chardas. Chardas was in a bind because the fire department had not yet given their approval for the building. And so we were a little, more than a little behind in unpacking. And a call went out. And on Saturday, a bunch of Northridge staff were there helping. And I thought that was a wonderful thing because they did not have to take their weekend time and do that. This morning, as I was there unloading my car, I had quite a number of stacks of things. And two young people came up to me, one of whom had, I guess, graduated from Jefferson High School. And they asked, did I know where the new Jefferson Junior High was? And I said, I am not sure, but I know who does. Since we're going inside, would you guys mind grabbing a box on your way? And they did. And we went in and Ms. Maria in the office was able to help them to find where they needed to be. And on the way back out, they said, hey, before we go, do you mind if we carry the rest of the boxes in for you? And so I think that speaks to the caliber of our students. Out of time. Last year, I was covering a kindergarten class while the teacher tested. And I was there several days in a row. And about two days after that, one of the kids said, when is the gray lady coming back? So the gray lady is back.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Appreciate you being here and serving at Fred Chardas. That is all the speakers we have tonight. So we are finished with our public participation. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
A move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves item as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda or on the motion?
Yeah. A move to amend the consent agenda to add Rachel Weber to the personal report under the new hires for APT employment.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the 2020- We need to vote on the- Okay. Well, we need a second vote. So, Ms. Lemon, is there any further discussion on the original motion? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Now we're on to our 2023-2024 district curriculum adoption. This is also an action item that needs a motion.
A move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopt the 2023-2024 district curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Well, before we open this up for board member discussion, Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you and to your staff to make this presentation to us.
Thank you, President Matthews. What you have before you is our curriculum for District Six. And annually, we bring this before you at the start of the school year for your consideration and approval. We do have with us tonight Dr. Dagan Andrews, Director of Curriculum. Dr. Dattery is not able to be here tonight, but Dr. Andrews is prepared to give you a brief presentation and to answer questions we might have.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, and school board members.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch and School Board members. I'm pleased to bring forward to you the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four curriculum guides from our curriculum teams in the Curriculum Department. Annually, specific curriculum guides are updated to reflect changes in the Colorado academic standards, aligned to new instructional resources and ensure alignment to state assessment system of Colorado measures of academic success, PSAT and SAT. These guides also align with the Colorado revised statutes that outline the work to be done at the local level. Additionally, curriculum review aligns with Innovation 2030, specifically Student Learning and Achievement Goal Two, which states that we will implement consistent and coherent aligned curriculum, assessment and instructional practices that are research-based to ensure all students learn. This year, the K five literacy curriculum team led by Tammy Hermance, Tammy, please wave, met to provide additional support and guidance for vocabulary development and guidance for tested skills, which are found in centers and homework activities. High school mathematics teachers led by John Fisher, John, please wave. They met to increase alignment to state assessments by relining the scope and sequences of algebra, geometry and Algebra II. High school social studies teachers led by Bill Fern, Bill, if you please wave, met to develop assessments focusing on using textual evidence, support arguments and with extended writing tasks. The work groups included approximately forty-nine teachers, coordinators, instructional coaches and administrators to review, update and add additional support for District Six educators. This curriculum will be implemented across District Six classrooms in these content areas for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, pending your approval. The curriculum guides presented to you this evening include all core content areas of K twelve language arts, math, science and social studies, and elective areas of K twelve music, art, P E and health, and six through twelve world languages. Following board approval, the curriculum guides will be posted on the district website so our staff, parents and community have access. Additionally, these guides are shared internally through Google Sharing, so all teachers have access to the curriculum guides and all accompanying documents. We would like to share our sincere appreciation to the teachers who worked on the curriculum guides. And we'd like to thank you for your consideration of these curriculum guides this evening.
We may have some comments for you, Mr. Andrews. Ms. Pappas?
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. I just want to also appreciate and acknowledge the work that is done in the summer to update and make sure that the curriculum is aligned with standards. I know that this has been going on for many, many years and I appreciate the consistency and just the efforts done in, in the summer by all staff members. So thank you and thanks to all the people that were involved.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any, Dr. Andrews. But I will just add my, add my sincere gratitude as well. And please pass that along to, to all the members of these teams who I know it's a lot that they take on in, in the summer when there are probably other things that they would rather be doing than examining curriculums. But we certainly appreciate it and we appreciate the, the work of you and your committee. So, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is that Summer Bond Project Progress that I mentioned earlier. And so see Mr. Henson coming, coming to the podium. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to add before Mr. Henson makes his presentation?
Okay, there we go. So I was just up here last June and kind of showed you what we were gonna do this summer. And so I'm up here in August and I'm gonna show you what we did. And as you heard earlier, we had thirteen schools this summer under major renovation. Actually, it was all pretty major renovation. Hundreds of classrooms kind of blown up. And in all of these buildings, we were able to open school in all of them. I will address, appreciate the work that the City of Greeley did with us on permitting to get these jobs done this summer, especially the fire marshal who was running around permitting multiple buildings. Every one of our contractors was, hey, can you call the fire marshal? Because we need an inspection. And they did a great job of getting to all these buildings. So it was a tremendous amount of work this summer, but we're pretty proud of where we're at. And so here's the list I showed you last June, kind of gave you some ideas here of what will be completed this summer on the right. And then here is kind of what we've done. And so you'll see a lot of these schools marked in red as completed. Now, completed means we still have to do punch lists. There's still a couple lagging items, but we're able to get in buildings. Where you see will be complete, those are places where things like wood doors had a forty-week lead time. So we're waiting when the doors come in, we'll go in and replace them. But all of these schools have, have received at a minimum our classroom, general classroom upgrade of paint, flooring, door hardware and secure vestibules. And so as of probably when we get to Thanksgiving, we'll have completed, twenty-four of our schools in the district will have been totally upgraded since the bond passed in two thousand nineteen. And we're already starting talks and planning with those schools you see in the pink at the bottom for our work next year. So here's demolition season is what I called my last presentation. So if you take a look at this classroom, stare at your screen and then look at this, this is that screen about eight weeks later. And that room was totally demolished. We had trenches dug in the floor. That was the old locker room at Greeley Central when it was built. And we made it into a culinary kitchen as best we could with the building codes for Greeley Central. So I want to remind you, we had about nine weeks this summer to get all this work done. So quite a transformation for that classroom and all the others that we went through. In terms of project completion, I'm gonna go through the thirteen. You can see them numbered up in the right-hand corner. So first, James Madison Steam Academy, there you have a picture of the kitchen. And on the right, you have a picture of the new gym. And for all these projects, there are some days where you're taking three steps ahead, three steps ahead. And then all of a sudden, something happens and you're four steps back. And so you deal with it. So one thing with the James Madison Steam Academy is about three weeks before school started, we had a pipe burst in the gym and water got on the floor. So it was cleaned up pretty quickly by the contractor. But we're monitoring that floor here over the next couple of months to see if we need to do any further work on it. This is also James Madison Steam Academy. You can see general classroom there in the left, which I always like to show that as we go through classrooms, this is what paint and carpet do. And then also new furniture do for our learning environments. And then on the right is a maker space for the Steam Academy. There are four of those in that building. And then this is the Common Learning Center or the Smart Lab area for Madison, a view from the second floor. And then one thing that James Madison has never had because they were K five, our science classrooms. So we built those in with the advent of sixth, seventh and eighth grade science. They have real science classrooms in that building. A second one, Franklin Middle School. Last year, we did all the classrooms in the building, so we went through and did that renovation. But they had adults sitting in closets without outlets as offices. So we knew we had to come back and do an addition to the office. So this last summer, we did a little bit of an addition here to give the adults appropriate space to work. So you can see Dr. Lester's new office there on the left, new receptionist area, and then also the secure vestibule there on the right. The third one that is still going on and has been a pretty complicated deal is the Heath Middle School, where we added on three additions. We added on a new wood shop, a new choir room. And the office is being built in the middle of the horseshoe. If you're going down, is that Fifteenth Street, Sixteenth Street, Fifteenth, whatever it is, you have all seen that side of the building. This is the other side. So this is from the courtyard view looking to the south. And so that is the art room on the left. And then on the right is a conference room. And then you go further to the front of the building, there'll be a smart lab and then a new office space on the front. So that'll be nice. That building will be enclosed. And the courtyard will be a true courtyard in terms of safety and security. On the left, those two pictures are of the wood shop there. So in terms of career and technical education, there's an upgraded wood shop classroom on the left and then the lab on the right. That lab is full of tools that we delivered here this last week. And then on the right is the new music room. So in November, when we finished that front office area, we will come back and then demo those remaining metal buildings that are to the west of the school. And here again, this, this classroom on the left, if you've been in Heath, that was the office last year. So that is a new classroom. And then the hallways, if you looked down the hallways of Heath, they had beat-up lockers. Some of them were reused from John Evans. We took out all the lockers, painted the walls and have learning spaces with tack boards and whiteboards down the hall. Totally different feel when you walk into that school. And then here's the new cafeteria flooring. And then fourth, the Jefferson Junior High Student Access Center. This was our probably most, probably most complicated job this year. Small, but very complicated as we built in the red Jefferson Junior High and then had to put in, keep it separate from the District Six access programs on the left. So things like Childfind, our auditory program, and two or three other programs are moving into the green area. And we kind of rebuilt the center area in terms of cafeteria. So for the Jefferson Junior High, they have, they're in a, well, they have a science, new science lab there on the left for their curriculum. So they've not had a dedicated science classroom before. So there they have one. And then in the middle picture at the bottom is Childfind Classroom. So in Childfind is where very young students are, I want to say tested for services. And so there's a viewing room there on the left where they watch kids play on the right and make determination there. So those rooms are special, specially built for Childfind. And then the auditory program, we moved the auditory booth over to this building there on the right. This is a cafeteria. This looks a lot better today than it did a week ago. All these pictures were one week ago that we have the flooring in. That space is cleaned up and cafeteria tables in the Jefferson High School, Junior High School kids used it today. And then Greeley Central, we're still finishing up here with some exterior doors, but everything is secure. And as doors come in this year, we will be putting them around the building. But we did finish the secure vestibules. This is the one that you can see on the north side of the building where we tied in that breezeway and actually brought that into the school instead of that being an external environment. It's now internal environment. Here were some of the classrooms that we did last year. This is the Historic Library, which is now a marketing classroom. And this is one of the areas where we restored the original floor. We did not do this throughout the building, but we did do it in this space. And then the bottom left is the new kitchen classroom that you can see. And then one thing that needed to be done for the building on the right, up in the belfry, those are original to the building nineteen twenty-seven. And they're almost falling out. So I told the contractors, I've made them a little bet. Can you take those out without breaking them? Most of them came out pretty well. And so I've given them to our new principal. And she and her staff are gonna decide what we do with those and how we dedicate those. They're absolutely beautiful. And they're in good shape. And we did replace them with a more modern window. And then in the lower left is the old weight, or the wrestling room at Greeley Central. And we, they've been using it as a weight room. So we put in a rubber floor on the outside for their weights and then brought in indoor turf so they can do whatever they want. Marching band could go in there and, and practice. You could take infield practice. You can do whatever. And then the wrestling mats will go over that during wrestling season. And then on the right is a picture of an upgraded classroom there up on the third floor. The library, which is a very special place at Greeley Central, we repainted that with all the trim and accents. We just updated the color using a little more of a modern color scheme. That looks very well, very nice. And then on the right, this is the west entrance, which is now a secured entrance. And it has a vestibule there on the right where they can have a security guard sit and monitor or they can sell tickets to the theater, whatever they want to do as a walk-up window. Meeker Elementary School got an addition. The picture on the left is a picture of their new preschool playground out on the left because they have two preschool classrooms there. And this is just kind of the breezeway in the middle and kind of looking down the hallways. And then, ooh, I skipped one. I guess that's the only picture I had of Meeker. Classrooms look just like all the other new classrooms, just funky colors like this one has. Sorry about that. And then Martinez Elementary School, eight classroom addition there. So this is down the corridor. There and a new classroom there on the right with new bathrooms. And then the room in the blue there is actually the art classroom, which sat at the end of the building. And we have made a second entrance now into the new wing. So the art room is the corner focus of the new addition where it meets the old building. And then the new Jefferson High School and CTE Center, which we have the Ruben Cutting tomorrow night. Lot of work done there. Here on the left, you can see the childcare playground outside of the childcare classrooms. On the right, you can see just a cafeteria extension where kids can sit on the outside, right next to the inside cafeteria. One thing we learned from Greeley West is if you have a great place to sit and eat, kids stay on campus. And so that was important for this school as well. On the left is the cafeteria there from the inside. On the right is the new art classroom. That art teacher is just tickled pink that they actually have an art classroom. They've been teaching art out of an elementary classroom for the last several years. And then Northridge, very extensive, we did ten million dollars of renovation in ten weeks. Very extensive blow up of this building. I know the principal's sitting in here sweating. We got him in today. But worked on the front there. On the right is the new vestibule, security entrance. That is working. We still have to finish inside the office here for about another week. New technology classroom there on the left and the new culinary arts kitchen on the right, which supports their ProStar program. That was a major undertaking, that, that classroom. Then Scott Elementary, again, new carpet paint, door hardware, secure, secure vestibule will be coming as we get during the year. New rubber floor. They had a carpeted gym floor in there that was about who knows how old and pretty gross. So they got a new gym floor in there. And then on the right, that is the old library. Those of you familiar with the building. That will be the smart lab. So what you see is a blackout ceiling there. The ceiling grid system that goes up just came this week. So they're installing that now. And then when that gets in, we can have the smart lab in hopefully next week. Monford Elementary School. We did not do an addition at Monford Elementary, but we took two classrooms at the front of the school and brought the office to the front so it could be adjacent to the secure vestibule. And so here's the new office that just got finished this week. They're in it. We still have some finishing touches to do to it. New smart lab on the right, new classroom here with new carpet paint and all the other things that we do. And then Shawshin Elementary, this is number twelve. This is a two-phase project that we will finish next summer. But the first phase, all the white classrooms look like the big C. Those were all renovated this summer. And then we have an addition going on the back and in the front that will be done by Thanksgiving. And then next summer, we're gonna come back and renovate the middle of the classroom. Doing that, and the principal never has to leave her office. So here on the left is the addition that'll be going out to the front. There again, we're pulling the offices out to the front adjacent to the secure vestibule. And then on the back, you see a four-classroom addition, which allows us to get rid of all the portables. That remaining portable building will be taken down probably after Christmas. And then here's a room inside. Teachers, we had stuff moved back into the center of the room, so it's hard to get good pictures in there. But same thing that we did to the other classrooms. And then last, our oldest school in the district built in nineteen seventeen in the Cameron Building. Fred Charter, as you know, has been on a journey, got evicted from Weld Works, moved to UNC for a year. And now has found a home in this building. They wanted to create spaces with large learning environments inside here. Three large learning bands are for students, two on the top floor, one in the basement. Thank you. Bless me. I'm dying. Okay. And so up here, in, in this picture is, we're waiting for the fire marshal here. The ceiling tiles are out. But this is one large, we took out two or three walls and made this large space for them to do, I believe this is their first through third grade learning band. And there are three areas like that throughout that, throughout that building. We have them in there. And, but we need to continue to do work into next summer to finish it. The security vestibule will come next summer. So that, in a nutshell, is your thirteen projects that we did this summer. Do you have any questions?
That was quite the presentation and quite the summer, Mr. Henson.
Well, I do all pictures.
I imagine we might have some, some questions or comments, but I haven't seen any come through yet. And maybe not.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we certainly appreciate all the work for you, from you and your team and, and our contractors as well. Fantastic summer and a lot that you guys got accomplished. Next on our agenda tonight are our revisions to Policy AC, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity. And this is an action item that will need a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to Policy AC, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, the changes to this policy seem pretty minor, simply some, you know, cleanup of, of the language. But is there anything you need to, to tell us before we open this up for board members to discuss?
I'll just preface all four of the remaining items to say that these are either minor changes due to personnel changes here in the district or changes due to, to legislative action this past spring. But nothing tremendously significant here, but I'm happy to take questions as we go through them. but I'm happy to take questions as we go through them.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have revisions to policy GDD, Classified Staff Vacations and Holidays. It's an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves revisions to policy GDD, Classified Staff Vacations and Holidays as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?